Meeting to order. All board members are present. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one person who would like to speak at the open forum. Erin Strickland is going to talk about her request for a sabbatical leave.
Thank you for the opportunity to come be here tonight. I talked with Mr. Dipperner and he said that you were able to read my letter of intent with my sabbatical leave request for next year. And I just would like to take a moment to field some questions if you have some. I just would like to reiterate that my passion is teaching and the district that, the way that our district is moving with the one-to-one teaching, it was my goal to learn more about how to implement better technology in our classrooms and strategies for keeping kids engaged and having more knowledge on how to do it effectively. And then using, so going back to the technology piece, it would be getting an online teaching certificate, so using what we already have implemented but finding different ways to build it into an elementary classroom. And then also learning about other ways to implement technology within the classroom. And using those certificates and that certification to have the time to build it into our curriculum. Right now, as it stands, it's very hard. A year or two years ago, I went back to school and got my master's degree. And just to have more time to build it into the things that we're doing is another piece of my intent with the sabbatical leave. And then also with the literacy certificate, just learning more about literacy and being a better teacher with that. And so I guess that's just my piece. My hope is to gain knowledge, certification, those three areas, and then have time to build it into the curriculum and the teaching. So that was my, that's my intent.
Thank you, Erin. We're going to be talking about this as an action item later in the meeting. If you have any questions specifically for Erin right now, we can ask them. Otherwise, we can just wait and discuss it during the meeting.
I guess my only question, would you be able to take some of these online without taking a sabbatical or upgrading these certificates?
Well, all of my, when I did my master's degree, that was an 18-month commitment, and that was all online. And, you know, completing the courses online is something that you're, we're doing, we're working a full-time day, then at night, we're doing the online courses, and weekends, we're doing the online courses. But then really, the time to implement it in and dive into it is the piece that is harder. You know, it's trying it and doing it, and it's not always successful. So I feel like having the time to really focus on implementing this new stuff that I'm learning through the certifications would, the sabbatical leave would allow me that time to really do it with fidelity.
Would you be interacting or proposing to interact with the school at all while you're doing the classes, or it would be done away from?
I could do subbing if that, if I would be allowed to do that while I'm on my leave. My other, you know, while I'm on, doing these courses, I would like to be able to go to other school districts to see how they're implementing their one-to-one technology and how they're using their literacy to balance and just kind of have that perspective of how others are doing it and how it's successful. Where, you know, working full-time, I'm unable to really see that piece in action.
And that part of it, Erin, is that part of the program, or is that something that you want to initiate?
That would be on my own initiated. Each of the, in the letter that I sent you, I identified the different courses that I would, that are required in getting the certification. And those aren't any, you know, you don't have to do a certain amount of hours in classrooms. It would be on my own.
I just wanted to ask too, should we, the PLCs here in the district, are you finding that to have any help with you in doing the initiatives that you want to do with the one-on-one and meeting other school districts? Are you finding that to be helpful or assisting you with the piece that you just mentioned that we were just talking about?
Well, I think, you know, where we're at right now, one-to-one technology in the elementary classroom is brand-new this year for us, 3-5. And I'm a third-grade teacher at Falcon Ridge. So at our PLCs, you know, we're focusing on what we want students to learn, how are we assessing them after the assessment, how are these kids responding to what they learned? And so really, at our PLCs, we're not necessarily planning on what we're doing together. We're looking more at our assessments and how are we teaching and changing it. But we really haven't had the time to talk about how do we implement technology to impact learning. We don't, the time is the piece that seems to be the most difficult. We keep trying, but we go back to what we know, and it's kind of the reality right now. As far as what I would bring back to the district, I've been on, served on the district, or our elementary technology team for the past eight years. And this year, I took, I have time off from the committee, but I am passionate about it. And I feel like after taking these, getting certification, that I would be a valuable asset to the district in providing in service and showing and teaching other teachers how to implement it and, you know, be able to share my knowledge, as I have done with, when I was on the tech committee and our tech team. Once a month, I presented on new technology that I was finding out and learning through the tech team and the things that we were finding out. So it's just, you know, technology's been around, but it now with the one-to-one, with the Chromebooks, it's awesome to have it at our fingertips, but it's just figuring out the most efficient way to implement it with eight-to-nine-year-olds, really at the younger age that I work with.
You can definitely tell you're passionate about the project. Any other questions? We'll discuss it later in the meeting.
Sure, okay. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
For our agenda tonight, we'd like to move two items up to do right after we approve the agenda. The action items 10-1 and 10-2, the bid awards, we're going to do those right away.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. So you guys want to go over the bids?
So we're finally at the point where we have our last two bids for this project ready for the board to approve. On February 2nd, we opened up the bids for Falcon Ridge at 2:00 in the boardroom here. And then on February 14th, we did the bus garage and the tennis court project as well. We had a total of six bidders.
Yeah, six bidders on Falcon Ridge renovation and ALC conversion.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead. This is Todd Wetzel from ICS.
Hi.
If you don't know him, he's our owner's rep for the project.
So like Craig said, we did receive six bids for Falcon Ridge ALC conversion. After reviewing the bids and meeting with the project oversight committee, contacted Metcon Construction, who is the parent hold bidder, and their bid is valid. And we're recommending a award of their total base bid of $1,748,000, along with Alternate One, which replaces nine classroom accordion walls to a sheet rock wall, replacing the air handler units, and also the intercom clock replacement. Alternate One was for $48,100, alternate two, $342,200, and the intercom clock replacement, $73,300, for a total bid of $2,211,600. We did receive all the proper forms from Metcon, and they are prepared to enter into contract with the district on board action, so.
And Metcon is a company that are doing?
Metcon's doing both middle school and CDC, apparently.
Do these have to be approved separately?
Yeah, we'll approve Falcon Ridge first, and then we'll move on to the bus garage.
And these bids are very favorable compared to what?
Yeah, the overall budget we had, or not budget, but the estimate that we had on was around two point?
Two-point-five.
Two-point-five million?
Yep.
So we were about $300,000 under what we thought it would be, which was a good thing for us, so we were pretty happy about that.
That's great.
And we're also, we're also very happy with Metcon getting that job as well. We've enjoyed working with them on these other two projects and don't see any reason why it wouldn't be any different for this one.
I'll make a motion to approve a ward of the bid for Falcon Ridge Elementary and the Alternative Learning Center to Metcon.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Next, we have the bus garage.
All right, February 14th, we received four bids for the bus garage addition and tennis court relocation. The lower parent bidder was Ebert Construction at a Corcoran, Minnesota. I've contacted them, their bid is valid. They are prepared to enter into a contract with the district on board action. And it's our recommendation to accept base bid only from Ebert Construction for $2,233,000.
Now, just for the people who are watching this potentially, our original budget for the bus garage was $800,000.
Eight-hundred thousand dollars, correct.
And because of savings we've seen in other areas, we've been able to move budget dollars into the bus garage, and we still are under budget of our bond referendum.
Correct.
Should that, we have Metcon bid on this too, it should not be an issue with Ebert? You've worked with Ebert before?
I have worked with Ebert before.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we award a bid to Ebert Construction for the transportation garage and the tennis courts.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. They have to go to the city council or city planning meetings.
Thanks.
Okay, back to the first page of our agenda.
Madam Chairman, I would like to recommend that we approve the consent potential.
I'll second.
At this time, I would like to point out several things, several individuals. We are approving the retirement of Judy Carlson, and Janine Erickson, and Sandy Eaton, and Mary Kay Prochek, and Sandy Shaniker. And all of them have been very valuable individuals for our school. I've worked with every one of them, and they will be missed. Hopefully, they will come back and serve some and continue to take part in the school and committees or other things.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Board committee reports. Policy committee's been busy, it looks like.
We met on February 21st. There's a small list of policies this time, and basically, we didn't have any major changes just matching to MSBA.
I have a question. Those policies in the agenda, were they the ones we're voting on today? Does there are six different?
There's, the ones up in the top section are the first readings, and then the other ones are?
First readings are not approved tonight.
Consent is approved.
Right.
Yeah, consent is approved. Southwest Metro?
We had our monthly meeting last Tuesday, and at that meeting, we had our first reading of the school year 18, 2018 draft budget. We talked about service animal procedure. More students are using service animals in their schools, and we want to be ahead of the curve, so to speak, because we see that there probably will be some use of service animals with students that attend the Southwest Metro Intermediate District. So instead of doing a formal policy, we're going to write a procedure and protocol for it rather than doing it as a policy as such. But it's something that's going to be coming down the road, and more and more students will be using service animals, we feel. We also talked about a retreat that the board and the superintendents from the districts will be having in March. At that meeting, we plan to discuss kind of the future, what it will look like as far as the Southwest Metro Intermediate District is concerned. We will be looking at maybe how we're going to accept new members, or will we be accepting new members into the, into the district? What will be the quota call for that? We are also looking at maybe capping it possibly at a certain number. At this time, we actually have a district that's looking formally into becoming a member of the intermediate school district. So we'll be doing that at our routine retreat planning on the 16th of March.
Jenny, how many schools do we have in there now? Twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Are they thinking of needing to cap it for space reasons or?
Well, and also just?
Administrative?
Yeah, just the degree of being able to be usable. You know, if it gets too large, there's a chance of it being too unwieldy. And another thing too is programs too. What kind of programs do we want to have in the intermediate district in the future? And are there some programs that maybe are no longer being used as much as they had been in the past? And maybe some districts are thinking of taking them back into their own districts and maybe taking them out of the intermediate package, so to speak? So a number of things that we'll be talking about as far as the future of the intermediate district.
Yeah, I think it'll be an interesting meeting. Like, quite a few, I know superintents have some reservations about it, but are keeping an open mind. I'd probably say that. Have reservations about expanding or?
And that takes care of it.
Does CPAC meet?
Uh, no.
Community Ed?
Community Ed meets the second Thursday of the odd months of the year, so our meeting will be next week. And until we haven't had a meeting, however, a couple of items. Again, this year, the Newport Exportsmen put on a fantastic fishing clinic, and some of the people that were there the first time just couldn't believe that it could be put together that well. And also yesterday, there was a band concert for band members, fifth grade all the way up through to our 12th graders. And that was excellent, excellent band.
I was at that band concert, and there were a lot of people there.
Yes, it's always full.
The gym is full. Wellness committee. I guess I don't even, that's, their schedule is, they only meet one time a year.
There's nothing yet. I don't even know if they'll be there.
Everyone is still well.
Still well, yeah.
I know nothing so far.
In early childhood, they are meeting right now and so on. We'll get the notes and report in our next board meeting.
Okay. Superintendent update?
Okay, well, I know I disappointed a lot of people last Friday. No, it wasn't me, actually, it's the weather people, but yeah, it was like a for-sure deal. Now, this time, I had time on my side. And like I told you in Friday's email, Thursday night, talked to other superintendents around the area here. Obviously, nothing was happening, but they kept saying it was going to happen, so we just decided to wait, which, thank goodness, we did. But yeah, it was, it was really strange, but that happens, and that's why sometimes you just can't make decisions till you have to sometimes. So it was very interesting. But I'm sure we'll be hit in March sometime here during the tournament season, so you know that. Yeah, just what Todd and Kitten, you mentioned, it was great to see all the kids and parents and grandparents and friends at the Panorama Band Concert for Grades 5 through 12. It's an annual event, so they need recognition. Also, in the arts, we've got speech, the conference invite this Thursday. And we're right in the middle of a postseason competition too at the high school with, well, dance, gymnastics, and girls hockey, boys hockey are all been eliminated in section competition right now. We have girls basketball at home Wednesday. They're the third seed in the section. Keep in mind, again, this is the second year, I was going to say third year, second year being in 4A, the biggest class. But we got the third seed out of eight teams. Boys basketball, the record's 21-3, is most wins in a season in a long, long time. I'm not sure what the record is, but they'll play their final home game this Friday, and they should get the second or third seed in a very tough section. Wrestling, just want to announce too, that Kobe Dunkle, ninth grader, Gage Shiles Jr., both qualified this past weekend and are going on to state. So that's a pretty neat thing. So those are the things, some of the things that have been going on mainly at the high school, and a lot of good news. And we had Lisa Weiner, who was Elementary Social Studies Teacher of the Year, got recognized in Mankato last evening. And I talked to Pat Purple, they said it was just a really, really nice banquet, so I'm very proud of Lisa Weiner, fifth grade elementary teacher at Ravens Street for being recognized for that.
Thank you. Sam, are you, I didn't know if you were done.
Pretty much done.
Oh, no. Because I just wanted to mention, there's an expo this weekend, right?
Oh, yes, I was, yeah, I had that. Lonsdale Expo, we will have a booth there, so administrative team will be there, and of course, like I said, I encourage all of you to be at our booth if you'd like. And I think the time from that is from 9 till 2. It's a long, so we're working in shifts there and promoting our school district. And as you know, probably half of Lonsdale, southeast part there is, it's all New Prague School District and obviously, a lot of other students too. So we've been doing it, I think, since my first year superintendent, so this will be our fourth year being at the expo.
I read those briefs here, so I know you.
No one else does.
You had it in there.
Yeah. Thanks for the reminder.
All right, now on to our actions. We need to approve an encroachment agreement for the tennis courts. Do you want to speak on that, Sandy? Very straightforward.
Yes, very, very straightforward. We are building our new tennis courts over existing sewer lines. So this is an encroachment agreement, just basically saying if they have to do any sort of emergency repair or replacement, we are responsible to repair our tennis courts that we know we're building over these sewer lines. So the city drafted the agreement, we had our attorney look at it, the attorney, our attorney had several suggestions to make it a little bit more favorable for the district, and the city was fine with those, so we're recommending it be approved as posted on the, on the website.
What does that mean when it talks about lining the sewer line?
You can, you can put a protective barrier down. I've talked to Craig and Todd, and they both said that we would not do that.
I'll make a motion, or even per motion. I'll make a motion to approve, approve the encroachment agreement for the tennis courts with the city.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Finally, the sabbatical request.
Yes, let me go over that right now. Obviously, I think it was probably about a couple weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, I sent you an email sharing with you Erin, Erin's request for sabbatical. And we had a brief discussion at the work session, and then we've met as administrative team, and then after that, I sent you a recommendation for not approving that, and I just want to go over, and these are things that, I've met with Erin a couple times briefly last week and then today. And first of all, I do want to say I respect and admire her desire to, you know, seek higher levels of education, to improve herself, that she can help our district, especially with the students that she's serving, and also sharing best practices with her fellow colleagues. So she's a well-respected teacher and well-liked teacher, and so I think I should mention that first. It is in the contract, if you've served, if you've worked here at least seven years, you can apply for a one-year sabbatical. We allow that one teacher per building, this is right in the teacher contract, and for a person to be paid half their salary. And on this, and like I've told Erin too, despite, I think it's a good thing, I know a lot of teachers that have gone through learner's edge for their program, there's three things with this too, why I'm not recommending approval. First of all is a rigor, 405 hours is roughly, but you know, if you take that 10 weeks or 10 school weeks, I should say, it's, to me, for an approved sabbatical, it'd be something that would be, a person would be more immersed into the schooling, whether it's for license or something that could really come back. Again, the second thing would be to benefit or fit a need that we have specifically. And, and that could be, for example, balanced literacy, where we're going in that direction right now, we're working with two consultants, and a person would spend a year at a university or with these people visiting schools and putting in the time. And then just justifying the cost to that too, with a half salary, it just, to me, just is not enough to do that. In the past 30 years, and it's been over 20 since, years since the school board has received a request, did some checking on this, or Sandy has, I think it was in the late 80s, it was approved for Dan Pauls. He went to university, got his master's degree, brought back the IGS project, and that was a big thing, brought it back there. There's two other teachers in the 90s that got approved that were for personal leave, which is a whole different other thing.
Which is unpaid.
Which is unpaid, yep. And one was to write a book, and I'm not sure what the other one was.
To travel.
To just, okay, to travel and study, I mean, so. So anyway, that's my recommendation on this item. And it's not like it's, again, and I told this to Erin, I think it's a good thing, but you know, we've got other teachers that have put in almost all those credits, or two-thirds of those credits, still keeping a full-time job too. So I just, it's a tough decision, but I think I want to be fair on this one too, for all people.
I certainly can appreciate Erin's desire to pursue this, but I do think we should follow the recommendation of our superintendent and not approve the sabbatical.
And Erin, I congratulate you for getting your masters. I think that's very commendable. And one thing I was thinking of too is when you're hypothetically, if you were to do the program and you wanted to integrate your, what your findings, and you wouldn't have that flexibility because you wouldn't be in the classroom anymore. So I'd like to see you in the classroom, integrating at the same time. And I know you had mentioned you wanted to do the three segments and pieces of it, but then I think you would lose part of that classroom not being in the classroom for the year. It was kind of a concern I was thinking of, and you could bring that back and integrate it, but you wouldn't have that piece to come back the next day or the next week and then...
I'm going to take the opposite. I read this policy, and it's very ambiguous. In fact, that is no, no procedure or process or anything, I'm rejection for this reason that we are, that we are giving. And I personally don't feel comfortable voting for it, so I'm voting against it, so I'm going to vote for Erin.
I do commend you for wanting to pursue this and to have some really great ideas. I think it might be something that could be fleshed out a little bit more, and different ways of doing the same things in the future. And I agree with superintendent on how we should deal with it right at this point in time, but I'm not saying that... in time, but I'm not saying that that would, you know, those ideas might change as we pursue different things in our district and have different areas where we need specialists.
I'll make a motion, we deny the request for sabbatical for Erin Streetflint.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 6-1.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.